Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Salco City Council meeting for Monday, October 20th at 6:30 PM. Before we call the regular meeting to order, we do have a workshop tonight, which is our fiscal year 24 audit presentation. And with us this evening, we do have interim city administrator Cole Prescott, as well as RKO, who will give us a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your spending the time with us this evening. As normally, I brought friends. So we have our interim treasurer, as well as our interim finance director with us, as well as RKO here, to go over the fiscal year 24 audit report. Before we get too far into this, just wanted to throw it out there that we know this is a little bit, it's been a long journey to get here, but we're here tonight, so I really, before we get started, I think we should just put it out on the table if there's anything we want to say about timing, and then just stick to the numbers tonight if we can.
Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I just want to echo those sentiments. I think that we can all acknowledge for the benefit of the public that things were not, this report was not filed in a timely fashion, but we understand that. We've been in contact with our auditors. I think there are several reasons that we understand created this issue. So I agree. I think that should not be a point of conversation this evening. I think we just, let's look at the numbers and let's move forward. I would say that in hopes that our outstanding 2025 audit is in full swing and that we can receive that in a more timely fashion. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, I'll hand it off to RKO. And during the presentation, we may hear from Judy and Ryan as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so tonight, I'm going to go over the 2024 fiscal results. I'm going to describe a little bit about the audit process, where we landed at the end of the fiscal year in terms of any comments in our reports, any recommendations, and then also discuss some of the highlights for fiscal year 24 in terms of fund balance and things like that. So I guess I'll just kind of dive right into the slide here, which is the summary of the audit results. The purpose of an audit is basically to render an opinion as to whether or not the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with all accounting standards and practices. I use the phrasing "in all material respects" because basically, that's our way of saying if there's a margin of error built into what we do. We don't test 100% of transactions. We do a risk-based approach. We take our samples in the riskiest areas, consider dollar amounts, dollar thresholds, and that's where we focus our testing. So it's not an absolute opinion, but we do render an opinion. And what you see in that first bullet point there is an unmodified opinion basically means it's a clean opinion. We don't have anything to disclose. Anytime we have to modify our opinion or add to our audit reports, usually indicates something's bad, and then we have to clarify it and add some additional context to it. But an unmodified opinion is exactly what you want to hear. One of the other things that's kind of accompanying the audit reports is the reports required by government auditing standards. Under those government auditing standards, we're required to put any findings or recommendations into three categories. These findings or recommendations are typically a result of our testing of internal controls, which is a risk assessment process. We're trying to figure out what policies and procedures you have in place, where there might be some weaknesses and chances for error or even potentially fraud. As I mentioned, we're required to put those recommendations into three categories, the most severe being a material weakness. Those are things that you want to take action on immediately and correct and implement policy and procedure to remedy those as soon as possible. The next level down would be significant deficiencies. These are things that are not quite as urgent, but still should be, you should take attention, take their, pay attention to them, and create some kind of plan to correct them in a timely manner. And then the third level is just kind of these general comments, general recommendations, kind of best practices, things that we think you can do to improve your operating efficiency and to minimize risk. So I'm happy to report there were no material weaknesses, there were no significant deficiencies for fiscal year 24. We did have some other comments, just kind of general recommendations falling into that lowest tier. The first being is a federal funding comment regarding vendor documentation. Under most federal grants, you're required to verify that the vendor you're paying is not suspended or debarred under the federal guidelines. And one way you can do that is by checking the sam.gov website and documenting and searching and making sure that vendor is not suspended or debarred. Another way you can verify that is by having them sign a certification and attesting that they are not suspended or debarred. And then the last process that you could go through would be to have a contract clause when you're contracting with your vendor, and then by agreeing to that contract, they are certifying again that they are not suspended or debarred, and they're able to receive federal funds. And again, this relates only to the federal funds that you receive that are being passed down through the vendors. So we found that there wasn't any documentation to prove that the city or the school was going through that process. And so we did some testing on our own to go to the sam.gov and check the vendors through a sample process. We didn't find anybody that was being paid inappropriately or anything like that, but we do recommend that the city and the school implement a process to document the fact that they checked that before they process payment to a vendor. Any questions on that one?
Counselor Hatch?
Yes, and I read in the report that management has addressed, though, actually, both of these for you, giving you some feedback in terms of changes to these internal controls. I suspect that in the 2025 audit, you will review the success of that improvement to the process. Is that a fair assumption?
Yes, yes. All comments, findings, whether there are material weaknesses, significant deficiency or anything else, are always followed up on in the next subsequent audit. The other comment that we had is the school payroll processing comment. You may recall that in the prior year, we had a comment relating to the school payroll processing. They've undergone some turnover in that position in the last couple of years, and as a result of that, 14 out of the 40 wage rates that we selected for testing did not have any approval forms on file regarding their wage rates. Now, we were able to verify wage rates through other means, union contracts and things of that nature, but typically, there's a payroll wage rate, like a change rate approval form that's held in their file. We couldn't find those for 14 people, and we just recommend that, you know, going through your procedures and making sure that you have the proper documentation in place to prove that you're paying people the appropriate wage rates. And again, that was probably most likely due to the turnover in that position. Things got shuffled around and lost in that transition. Any questions on that one?
Any questions on that one?
Okay.
Thank you.
Also, part of the audit process is the reports required by the Uniform Guidance. I mentioned the comment on the federal funding before. Normally, if we have comments or findings on the federal grants that we're testing, they might rise to the level where we're issuing a federal finding, which means that that report goes to the federal government, and they look at that and they say, oh, okay, if you are being issued findings for certain grants that may impact your grant funding for the next year, or they may withdraw grant funding for the next year because they deem you not to be compliant. I've never seen that, but they potentially do that. So the federal funding comment that we had wasn't significant and wasn't a material dollar amount, so that's why we just kind of left it as an other comment. And I'm referring to this because under the Uniform Guidance report, that is where we discussed our testing and our findings related to federal grant testing that we're required to do. Anytime you expend more than $750,000 in a single year, you're required to undergo what's called a single audit, or it's more focused audit specifically on the federal grants that you receive and what you spent during the year. There is a risk assessment process associated with that as well. We don't test all of your grants and all your programs. We assess risk, we test the high-dollar threshold ones using the guidance that's laid out in the Uniform Guidance. And in 2024, or fiscal, for fiscal year 24, we tested the local entitlement cluster. It's typically one of your largest ones at the school every year. Glad to report there were no findings that we had to report to the federal government, but again, there was that other comment, but it's not material or significant enough to put into our Uniform Guidance report. And if you're curious, there is a whole separate report related to the Uniform Guidance, and there's a schedule of expenditures of federal awards, which shows you all the grants that you spent money out of during fiscal year 24, so that will break it down in more The next things I have to go over are some of the financial highlights for 2024, focusing more now on the figures. For the general fund, it had a net increase in fund balance of about $3.4 million in fiscal year 24. Your fund balance is basically the same thing as your equity. If you take all your assets, satisfy all your liabilities, what would you have left over? So in this case, you had about a $3.4 million increase to that fund balance in fiscal year 24, and that was a result of revenues exceeding budget by almost $3 million. There was additional excise tax revenue, state revenue sharing, building permit fees, a large increase in recreation programs in fiscal year 24, and then investment income we saw across the board in '24, all the towns we went to, just was off the charts crazy for 2024. Also, kind of improving your fund balance was the fact that your expenditures came in under budget by $1.2 million per the year. And anytime we talk about savings and budget categories, or in some cases, over expenditures and budget categories, it's usually due to staffing. It's usually due to payroll, wages, health and benefits. Those are the largest expenditures in the town, so that makes sense that usually the result, that the explanation is shortages in positions or overages in certain areas results in your change in your budget to actual. In this case, it was related to public safety and public works where there were shortages in those positions for 2024. Similarly, the school operations fund had a net increase in fund balance of $762,000 for the year, and that was the result of revenues exceeding budget by about $264,000, probably most likely due to the increased state subsidy and additional tuition received. Typically, tuition tends to be budgeted pretty low because you're not really sure exactly what you're going to have for enrollment during the year, so that tends to come over, come in over budget, in this case, for revenues over budget being a good thing. And then expenditures were under budget by 1.3 million. Again, lots of savings due to unfilled positions, very hard to find teachers, ed techs, bus drivers throughout the fiscal year. So this is the city general fund fund balance, and we are focusing just on the city general fund here. There are lots of other funds in the city, special revenue funds, capital project funds, but this is the general fund where most of the activity takes place. So again, the fund balance is basically after you satisfy all your liabilities, what do you have left over to work with? In this case, it increased by 3.5 million from the prior year. You can see a pretty noticeable trend over the last five years, your fund balance increasing, and typically, that indicates a healthier financial position. You're more able to kind of weather the storm if some unexpected event comes into play. You'll see that fund balance is divided into categories. There's the non-spendable category, which means exactly that. It's kind of not available for spending, whether it's not in liquid cash form or it's already been spent. In some cases, this relates to your prepaid expenditure. Some things are prepaid, so. Then there's the committed category. I think that refers or relates to the ecology school and that special program that was kind of set aside. And then there's the assigned category, which is your amounts being used in the subsequent budget to kind of balance the budget and to reduce the tax burden. There's also certain encumbrances included in there, which are basically parts of the prior year budget that weren't spent but are being carried over to the next year so that they can kind of continue that spending on whatever related projects and items there. And then the rest that cannot be classified falls to unassigned, which means you can utilize those funds for really whatever you see fit. And then a couple of slides, we'll talk a little bit more about the fund balance. The city does have a fund balance target for its unassigned, and we'll get to that in just a couple of slides. On the school side, the school operations fund, again, the school does have other funds, grant funds, capital project funds, but this is just the school operations fund, the main fund where most of the activity takes place. And you can see in 2021, it was actually at a deficit, improving in 2024 to quite, quite an increase over the last couple of years. All the school operations fund fund balance is going to show as restricted because it is restricted specifically for use education, for education use, except for a small portion, which is non-spendable, which, as I mentioned in the previous slide, that's related to prepaid expenditures, things that have already been spent down. So here is a chart showing the unassigned fund balance as a percent of budget. The city targets between, I believe it's 8 and 16% of unassigned fund balance as a percent of the next year's budget. And so for the last couple of years, the city has exceeded that target threshold by a little bit in 2022, and then slowly increasing into 2024. And so I think under the policy or the charter, whatever it may be, those funds are supposed to be kind of discussed and reallocated to capital projects. Am I correct on that?
Yes, and there's a few other items. There's a few other items that are listed, and that is in the front of the book. I'll find the page number. What you can use those surplus for.
There's a good chart. I didn't mention it earlier. The annual comprehensive, the annual comprehensive financial report, it's a very lengthy document. It's 140 pages, I believe, but there is a section in there called Management's Discussion and Analysis, which really breaks down the highlights of the year, probably even more so in better detail than what I'm going over tonight. So if you read anything in the financial statements, read that first. It kind of, it gives you a good narrative of what happened during the year, and it does have a chart that shows you the fund balance and showing that trend over a longer period of time. Still talking about the fund balance here, just another way of looking at the assigned and unassigned fund balance. These are the two least restrictive categories. The unassigned, as I mentioned, is available for kind of spending and allocation moving forward. The assigned is already kind of spoken for, but it can be reassigned. Committed or restricted funds are much harder to utilize and reassign, whereas unassigned, whereas assigned can be kind of manipulated and voted on and moved into different categories if need be. But again, just showing you the trend, this time over 10 years, as the increase in fund On this next slide, we discuss the property tax collection rates. This chart is a little bit deceiving because if you look at the vertical axis, it doesn't start at zero, it starts at 96%. What you should take away from this chart is that in any given year, almost 98% of taxes are collected in that given year. And then going forward in future years, maybe one, two, three years afterwards, almost 99% is collected, so very high collection rate on your property taxes. This next slide relates to the property tax rates, just kind of showing you how they fluctuated over the last 10 years. For the most part, relatively stable until about 2023, and then it starts to dip. That's when property valuations started to increase, so as property valuations increase and you're looking to keep kind of a target tax assessment, your tax rate will decrease. So it doesn't necessarily translate to a lower tax commitment, but it does translate, you know, higher property valuation, lower tax rate, all else being equal. And that explains the largest dip in 2024, is the valuation of property just kind of For the general fund, again, we're looking at the expenditure distribution for 2024. This chart, if you were here for my presentation last year, should look pretty familiar. If you were to take this pie chart and lay it over the pie chart from last year, it would look almost identical. The categories relative to the total expenditures really doesn't change much from year to year. No one category changed by more than 1% from the prior year, so very consistent from year to year. Education is always the largest category in any town that I go to, in this case being about 54% of your expenditures for the year. Public safety is always number two, in this case being about 13%, and then typically, public works is also third, so this case being around 8%. Pretty consistent with last year, as I said. For the long-term liabilities, talking about your debt, you have some bonds payable specifically with the governmental funds that have been declining for the last five years as there's been no new issuances of bonded debt in the governmental funds. So as you continue to pay those off on the regularly scheduled amortization schedules, you're going to see your debt decline there. In the business-type funds, specifically the wastewater fund, there is some new debt, a big wastewater project going on. You're drawing down those funds as needed to cover expenditures. That increases your debt during the year, so that number is going to continue to climb for the next couple of years until that project's completed, and then once you start paying it off, it'll start to decline. Notes payable relatively insignificant compared to the bonded debt. Those are kind of other loans and things like that. Finances, finance purchases, also known as lease purchases for smaller pieces of equipment, you know, vehicles, things like that, ambulance, fire trucks. Those tend to be smaller borrowings, and generally, as one is kind of paid off, there's usually another one coming on, so it stays pretty consistent, right around $4 million for the last couple of years. Finance purchases for the business type, again, the wastewater, declining. There hasn't been any new ones on that side of things for a little while. And then the last two kind of columns there, the net pension liabilities and the OPEB liabilities, those are two things there that I don't really want you to put too much weight in. Those are figures that are created by actuaries. They do a lot of analysis and assessment based on, you know, what the town is required to contribute for the pension plan, what the town is required to contribute for the health insurance plans. They project out a lot of things over 30 years, how your investments are going to earn, you know, the rate of return, life expectancy rates, increases in salary, increases in health insurance rates. All these things go into creating these liabilities. To give you an idea of, you know, if you change your policy or if you change your health insurance or something significantly, to see the effect that it would have on your overall liability. These are not liabilities that you're going to have to pay off next year or anything like that. These are things that are going to go on in perpetuity, so it's just kind of to give you like a ballpark measurement is basically what they're there for. And you can see how drastically they will fluctuate, whereas in 2022, the net pension liability actually was a pension asset because in that year, the main first pension program was technically overfunded for a short period of time because their investments did quite well that year, and that turned around very quickly the next year. On this next slide, you'll see the debt per capita for the last 10 fiscal years. This is kind of considering all of your debt, not just necessarily bonded debt, so it may differ a little bit from the statistical tables that are in the back of the ACFA. If you look at the back of the ACFA, there's a lot of historical trend analysis in detail that's really good insight, so that is a good place to look as well, in addition to the Management's Discussion and Analysis section. It'll give you some good insight as to how the city has been improving or not over the last 10 years. But debt per capita, which is basically your debt per, you know, citizen, fluctuates over the last couple of years. It was declining until 2023 and then jumped up in 2024, again, due to the wastewater debt, and that's being drawn down and coming on in 2024. And then here's the debt per capita compared to other cities. Because your fund balance has been pretty healthy over the last couple of years, that does allow you to kind of decrease the amount of borrowing that you need to do. It doesn't completely eliminate it, but it does allow you to reduce it, and so as a result, you can see that debt per capita is actually pretty low compared to other neighboring And that is all I have for you tonight. I know that was kind of very high level and a quick overlook of all the things that went on. If you have any questions, we can handle those now.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Just a couple of observations, maybe more so for the public. First of all, I've sat on the council four and a half years. I feel really proud of the fact that we're pretty strong in community financially. I had nothing to do with it. We have a really, really well-managed city, so I think we should all take solace in that. But I just want to acknowledge at a high level, you know, these general fund increases can be looked at as a positive thing, but I think that part of that contribution was the fact that, at least in '24, we actually funded a lot of positions within the city that weren't filled. And so, you know, it's like if they were filled, we would have likely have spent the money. Now, that was offset by overtime costs, so it's not a perfect match, but. So moving forward, I think, and I'm just speculating here, when we get to '25 audit, when I think we moved into almost full capacity with our public safety departments, that that margin might erode a little bit. I don't know. I hope it doesn't, but it might. So I don't want people to think that this is like going to be a steady, a steady trend moving forward. And then I just wanted to also comment on the, get to the right page here, the 21.4% unassigned balance, another really strong position to be in, and theoretically, our charter says, you know, we want to peak at about 16.62%. All that means is we've got money in our fund balance that could, if the council decides to do this, and this topic has come up, I know Councilor Berman's not here this evening, has brought this up in the past, and I think Councilor Johnson as well, that we can, if the council so desires, to attempt to appropriate some of that, kind of put it in reserve for the issues that are on page eight of that publication. And you can see that there's a variety of things that we could decide as a council worthy of funding consideration. And one of, one of the areas that I have always had interest in, and I don't want to speak for the mayor, but I think she would agree, that we need to be trying to find ways to tackle affordable housing, and I think part of that solution is, as a municipality, trying to acquire real estate that we can control and develop in a public-private partnership. So I just put that out there. I don't know how the council will address this moving forward, but it is something that we're, we have brought up before, but it's nice to be sitting here and have, it's a good problem to have, so I'm glad that we're in that position. And then other than that, I think I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I did ask Judy to look a little bit more at our fund balance in a more forward-thinking theory. So I know this is really about fiscal year 24 audit this evening, but I have had a few questions about the fund balance. So I figured, while she's here. So she did look a little bit more at our unassigned fund balance going past the fiscal year 24 audit, so she can give you the glimpse into those numbers.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Sure. So in the presentation, of course, this is a picture in time of June 30th of 2024. So a lot of time has gone by. There is a 22, 24.2%, I'm sorry, 21.4%, which really gives you a surplus of about $3.5 million above that 16.67% maximum, which is what your goal is. But since then, there have been some subsequent events that took place. We were preparing the '26 budget, and we was voted to utilize about $962,000, a little bit more than that, to offset taxes. There was also two votes from the city council at that time to move from unassigned fund balance funds to committed fund balance, which will show up in your FY '25 financial statements. One was $500,000 for some infrastructure future improvements to reserve and put some funds aside. And the other was $200,000 for affordable housing. So that kind of brings your fund balance down to a little over $14 million. And I didn't include, in my projection here, any analysis for FY '25. So I figure it's a little bit too early. We're still working on closing up FY '25, and I really don't like to throw a number out there. But so currently with that, and your budget standing at 80 point, almost 80.4 million dollars, you're still at 18% right now. So and I think after we close FY '25, you're going to be able to reserve some additional funds for your future efforts.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding that information? Don't think we're seeing any. Is that it that we've got? All right, perfect. Thank you very much. We do appreciate you coming out and providing us with this information.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Would like to call the official meeting to order at 7:02. Would like to make note that all councilors are present this evening, with the exception of Councilor Berman and Councilor Parks, who have both been excused. And would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And just for the information for everybody in attendance tonight, we appreciate everybody being here. But for those of you who are here for the Blue Haven Park information, that is going to be on next week's agenda. So if you are here for public comment, we still would love to hear you speak. But just know that the actual agenda item will be for next week. Okay, that takes us to item number four, and that is general. And there is nothing under that item this evening. Item five is committee correspondence to council. Are there any councilors wishing to speak? Councilor Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have several things from the committees I serve on. Two of them are from Age Friendly Saco. So November 8th, which is a Saturday, Age Friendly Saco Wellness Fair will be happening. It's a significant event aimed at promoting active aging and providing resources and support to local seniors. The fair will be held on November 8th, as mentioned, at Thornton Academy atrium, offering a full day of health education, connections to local resources, and engaging activities. Participants can expect to learn about various services, attend educational seminars, and enjoy vendor exhibits showcasing local services and products. The event is free to attend, but advanced registration is required. For more information or to reserve a spot, contact the Age Friendly Saco office at (207) 710-5029. And also, Age Friendly's next luncheon is on November 13th, which is a Thursday. The meal will be turkey, mashed potatoes, gravy, squash roll, and cranberry squares. It sounds familiar for that time of year. Doors will open at 11:30 a.m., with the meal being served at about 12 p.m. at the Saco Elks Club. You can sign up for the luncheon by filling out the attached, you can call the Age Friendly Saco office at the same number, (710) 5029, after 10 a.m. on October 10th. So and they're asking if you're ill to please stay home for the protection of all attending. They do have limited seating. If you sign up and your plans change, please call the office. And just to note, this program for November has, they've received, Age Friendly Saco has received funds to cover the whole meal. So the meal is going to be free. So you just have to get there and reserve your spot. And if you need a ride, let them know as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
Oh, just one more thing. Thank you. Saco Main Street had a successful pumpkin harvest festival. And it was noted that the mayor actually won the pie eating contest, beating me and last year's champion. So and I'm not bitter about it at all. But so, but if you want to see what happened, if you weren't able to make it, go to the Saco Main Street website, and you can see it, and then you can plan for next year. It was at the C.K. Burns School this year. And I will say, even though I did miss it on Main Street, it was particularly nice to have it in that space.
Yes, we had very, very positive comments about the whole event yesterday, even the location. So yes, I'm looking for challengers to come up and compete against me next year. That kind of forces me back in. I have to. I won't be asked. It won't kind of be demanded. Anyone else? Okay, great. Moving on to item number six, that is public comment this evening. And I will start with the list. And when your name is called, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And with the potential of quite a few comments tonight, I am going to limit at exactly three minutes. And the first one that we have up is Terri Dunham.
Hi, my name is Terri Dunham.
Oh, we're going to pull the microphone down. Thank you. There you go.
Hi, my name is Terri Dunham, and I live at 30 Pheasant Road. And I'm very concerned about the rent increases as I'm on a fixed income. And this is the, I've only been living in the Mobile Home Park for three and a half years. And this is the fourth rental increase. And this is the second one within this year. And I'm not only concerned for myself, but other people within the Mobile Home Park community that are also in the same predicament that I am, that we're on fixed incomes. And there's no increasing that income. So it makes it very difficult in that, you know, just, the park themselves don't really provide a lot of services for the community with the rate that they keep increasing the rent. Because mine has gone up now since the last increase. As I said, this is the second one in the year. It's $160 a month. That's a significant increase. And like I said, I've only been there a little over three and a half years. And it's the fourth increase since we moved here. And it's supposed to be an affordable community. And it's just hard when so many of us are on fixed incomes and very limited to what is available for us. And it's concern of not only myself, but other people being driven out of their homes because they can't afford to be there. But yet, you can't afford rent anywhere either, you know, so. But and, you know, just the condition of the roads and service, like I said, you know, services that don't seem to be being provided with the, it doesn't seem to be in conjunction with why they would rent, increase the rent so much when we're expected to maintain our own property or our own land. I'm not really sure what else to say, but I just.
No, you may do. Yep, whatever you feel. You still have 38 seconds left, so.
Okay, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have Shane Morningstar.
Hi, my name is Shane Morningstar at 30 Pheasant Road. I came today to voice my concerns on behalf of the Blue Haven Mobile Home Park and community regarding the recent hike they have notified us of. They have proposed a $110 price hike per month without any proposal for improvements or additional services. Considering the economic culture we are part of, paired with the fact that I have heard numerous complaints from multiple neighbors that the park does not maintain itself well, I am deeply concerned. The roads are torn up and often patched poorly, if at all. We do not have the security systems in place or any community-based amenities. And many of our neighbors struggle already to make ends meet with their fixed incomes or limited paychecks. I was just released from the hospital with some wildly high bills inbound. Last year, I lost my beloved therapy dog, Alu, two weeks after a $10,000 surgery to treat her cancer. I am still paying $550 a month to fulfill that financial obligation. And this recent hike will definitely affect that. Saddled with student loans for a career in education that I did hope to further, I had to stop and resume work due to the raising costs to help my elderly mother and I continue to afford to live in Maine.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Richard Goslin.
Thank you for having us. Richard Goslin, Seven Mizzou Circle at the Pine Haven Community. Yes, the increase really outrageous. I moved into the park in 2015 at $300 a month. Now, here we are at October 2025, I'm at $515. And then, if we're looking to go to a $660 a month, that's a 30% increase. It's outrageous. Looking at something, and I'm not sure if that's still effective, through the state, the CPI, and there was a 10% involved in there, which would, and I'm not sure for sure. Some say that's not in effect anymore. But I think what I'm looking at would be, and I believe the council has the power to do this, to have an emergency moratorium to curtail this $150 increase and make it more reasonable, like anyways, you know, 7% to 10%. A lot of people are on fixed income, like myself. Probably at least half of the park people are on fixed income. Some of them I'm just going to have to leave, I guess. I don't know. Well, Saco's a good community. These owners all around the United States, they're family also. They just have a little more money than we do. But I don't know. My thing with looking at that increase just makes an incentive to be able to sell the park. Instead of a $515 monthly rent, now it's $660. Looks much better than what it was. Plus, we also pay a water bill too, which we, with Michelle, we never paid a water bill. So that's 15, the average of $15 a month. Anyways, hopefully, and I know the council and our state representative, Mrs. Bailey, I think you're all with us, hopefully. Saco's a great community. I was born and brought up in benefit. But I've been in Saco for 42 years. So my time's up. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Okay, next up, we have Lisa DeRoscher.
Well, I just want to start out by saying we are living in a crisis right now.
I'm sorry, Lisa, could you give your name and address for the record first, please?
Lisa DeRoscher, 18 Pine Haven Street in Saco. We're living in a crisis right now of unaffordable park rent. 60% of people are living paycheck to paycheck. The government is shut down. People are living without a paycheck right now for over a month. Minimum wage is at a bare minimum poverty level. I moved into this park in Saco for affordable living in a hope of retiring someday. And this company wants to raise the lot rent, so it's higher than my mortgage payment. They want to bring in all these expensive homes. People are currently living on a fixed income. When we have to pay off our mortgage, we're going to have a lot rent mortgage, so we won't be without a mortgage. I have families that own houses in benefit in Saco. And the prices that they're paying for their property taxes is less than what we're paying for lot rent. It started out at $300. They want to go up to $850. I volunteered helping out walking the park, meeting all of the people in the community, passing out packets, collecting signatures. I met so many loving, intelligent people that welcomed me into their homes. There are so many frightened people that are having a hardship on this rent increase, and they live on a budget. I had my taxes done last year, and my accountant could not believe what I was paying already for lot rent. This was before the increase coming up of $660. We've got to cap this off moving forward. Because when I went around and spoke to people, guess what? I didn't see anybody that was rich and that could afford this increase. This is also going on. I also want to represent Shady Oaks in Arundel, because I have family that live there also. They're going through the same thing. Unfortunately, they didn't have volunteers in this park to help them with the assistance. They didn't know where to turn. They have concerns also. I don't know what's going to happen to them also.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, next on the list, we have M.L. Leach.
Hi, last time, oh, my name's Mary Lynn Leach. I work at, excuse me, I live at 19 Gallant. Last time I did talk also, it had been my plan to retire in 2026. And that is no longer my plan because the inappropriate price increase for my lot rent has completely pushed that budget right out the door. So it just, it has affected me personally. And I just think, if it was reasonable, I wouldn't say anything. But it's, I don't think it's reasonable. wouldn't say anything, but it's, I don't think it's reasonable. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and the last person that we have signed up on the list this evening is Maurice Burrows.
I'm Maurice Burrows, seventeen Gallant Drive, Blue Haven Mobile Park, and I'm just picking up from where I left off last week, it was a storm and the branches that were taken down. There was a branch hanging over my garage, I have a picture of it, and it was there for five months. I asked them to come and take it down more than once, two-minute job, and it finally came down on its own one day. I got up in the morning, it was right by my car. My driveway, my walkway in the back has, is caving in, I have now since, well, since spring, I have another pocket in here, so there's four of them, which is hard to walk on. And that's the branches, I have a pile of branches out back. I'm picking up now from the debris from the storm back in twenty-four. They refused to do it, and naturally, if you wait long enough, you get, you do a, go and do yourself. So I'm picking that up now, and it should be back into pretty much the same shape. But the front yard is still bed in bad shape, but cannot be mowed by a hand mower because of, well, I have, the handlebars go from my waist up to my chin. Believe it or not, I could, anybody can try it. The lawnmower has to be put up way up on high. I cannot use a walk-behind mower because the wheels get airborne, and then you, the mower's heavy, you have to pull it back, yank it, and give it another run, and give it a push to help it along. They will not repair it. The backyard is still a mess. My neighbor came over, mowed the lawn, and I was out there the other day, and I found a piece of the lawnmower, it was a riding lawnmower, which, which I turned him over to them, it broke the weld off of it. Fortunately, it didn't ruin the mower, but it'll have to be welded again. So, we're paying for things, and we're not getting anything for it. And that's about it, I guess, for now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for my time.
Okay, that is everyone I have signed up. If there is anyone else from the audience wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes.
Hello, everyone, I'm Kelly Archer, one eighty-five Bradley Street. I have been patient for many years for responsive, compliant, and timely better governance. I never wanted to go in this stern direction, but officials, nonactions compel me now to do so. I have read many Saco lawsuits, received many FOIAs, and recorded many violations by city officials, to the point of learning how to gather hundreds upon hundreds of citizens co-file petitions to recall and a grievance and call to actions. Where are the ad hoc council deliberations on contract zones, steering trust, the ecology school left-hand turn lane, and their violations over years? Contract zones are a legal mess. Steering trust noncompliantly sold three twenty-one Lincoln Street unlawfully. The ecology school doesn't pay their bills, and the turn lane and the BPI has not, not been completed. Even the previous administrator could not receive the requested and required answers from the steering trustees. The new city solicitor had months this year to review these years of egregious violations along with the ad hoc committee. Interim city administrator and mayor, you are responsible for setting these, the agenda. It is now the third week of October. Why are you stalling? Is it because you are both passing the buck, the tough issues, to a new administrator and administration and administrator? Are you waiting for three new counselors who do not have historical knowledge to steer them in the direction not best for the city of Saco? The citizens and ad hoc committee have done their jobs. You are complicit to not address these issues. You are not transparent or forthcoming. All of these issues must be on November's agenda or next week's, even if you have, have to add another council meeting. I am disgusted by the lack of courage to do the right thing. Many of the city issues are and have been illegal, noncompliant, and/or violations. Where is the code enforcement officer? The complaints have been made for years. He is locally and state mandated to do his job. Do we now have to go to the state as we did with three twenty-one Lincoln Street TMP rescission? I, we are ready to do so. Ms. Prescott, did you purposely not include the CEO in your meager TES response to Ms. Brown? As deputy administrator who oversees the code office, why did you state, "I'm not aware of review by code enforcement of these parcels"? Seven years of complaints and violations is enough. I am ready to open up all of my years of research. It is spreadsheets. I'm done. And open them up, the contracts and the planning board approvals with conditions not being followed, not being enforced, not being fined. What is going on? I'm done. This is, I've been at this for nine years. Seven of these have been right here doing all, everything that we and citizens have done. City officials and trustees got.
Thank you, Kelly, we are at the three-minute mark, and I did state earlier that we were sticking to the three minutes tonight. I do appreciate.
Okay, I will email this. Deputy Mayor, please get these issues on, on the agenda before this council is over.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Hi, Sarah Blanger, thirty-one C, Pheasant Road in Blue Haven Mobile Home Park. You've heard a lot of us talk about all of the personal issues that we have with the rate increases that is being proposed. Last, at the last meeting, I know that there were a lot of comments that were made to us about what it is that you would like us to provide you, for you to be able to make the determination on the moratorium. We have a couple people that have been out and away, one on her honeymoon, so we really don't want to bother her this week, but we have been gathering information. If you can possibly maybe detail the information that you really think that you need for us to give to you, which would better allow you to make the decision on the moratorium. If you can just let us know that, that would be great. We appreciate all of the time that you've put into us, and we'll see you next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Morrison, I live at twenty-one Gallant Drive, Blue Haven Mobile Home Park, and I heard this evening, the council here, they talked about affordable housing, and the amount of money set aside for affordable housing, living in the mobile home park has been affordable housing for my family for the last fifty-one years. And I see that with the new management, that is, they're gonna put us right out of affordable housing. From what I hear, the people here, most of us can afford living there with the expenses, but with that increase, it's gonna drive some people right out. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, my name's John Vite, I live at one Gallant Drive, Saco. I'd just like to take a second to thank Sarah, Rodney, Kathy, Barbara, and Brian, I hope I didn't miss anybody, for all the work they've done for me and my family. I'd like to thank the city council who have listened to us for the last month, and like to thank the mayor for all she's done for us. I just, I'm here to ask you to please help the people of Blue Haven Community, do whatever is in your power that you can do, and that's really, you've heard enough about how, there's no doubt it's gonna affect a lot of people's lives, and we, it's gonna fall, so, I got pockets in, so I can't talk very good. So, if you can do whatever is in your power to, by the law, I told them to it. Thank you.
We do allow once-up to, yeah, unless you have something different. Yep, if it's something completely different that you originally spoke on.
I just wanted to say, I forgot to tell you, that I just had legal counsel over my lawn, and they came back to me and said there is nothing that they can do, that I would have to take him to court to get it fixed. I just want that in the record, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? Not seeing anyone seeking recognition, moving on to item seven tonight, that is the approval of the minutes for September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion?
So move to approve.
Motion made by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion or comment on the minutes? Okay, roll call vote, Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero. Moving on to item eight, that is consent items, there are no items this evening under that. Item nine are action items, there are two items this evening. Item A is the item tabled October sixth, twenty twenty-five, for the one reading of the city street acceptance request per Charter one eighty-six standards, the Amari Court and Dupie Drive in the Amari Springs subdivision, and that is Councilor Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to remove the item from the table.
Motion has been made by Councilor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero to untable. Councilor Johnston?
Jason Labonte of Home Innovations LLC requests city street acceptance review per Chapter one eighty-six of city ordinance for Amari Court and Dupie Drive with associated project infrastructure, as indicated in the subdivision plan. The planning board approved the Amari Springs subdivision on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. These roads were designed to public city street standards. The punch list issued from Public Works has been completed, the draft documentation is pending, final legal review with the city's current city attorney. The planning board reviewed this matter at its meeting on September sixteenth and forwarded a positive recommendation to city council, provided final legal review was completed. It's my understanding that that legal review is still with the associated attorneys. The interim city administrator can, I guess, give further details, excuse me, or, well, I'll let her go ahead.
Unfortunately, the motion, there hasn't been a motion made for discussion.
That is a fantastic point. Well, I guess I would move to accept Amari Court and Dupie Drive as city streets pursuant to Chapter one eighty-six ordinance provisions.
Motion has been made by Councilor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. All right, any discussion or comments on the item? Interim city administrator, Prescott?
Thank you. We are working through legal review of this. We do have all the easements drafted up, there were some easements identified that our new city attorney said were required, that our previous city attorney had not flagged because of the way that the subdivision was laid out in the approved subdivision plan, and how the warranty deeds were laid out. So now, the developer is working diligently to obtain those final few easements, and as soon as we have those, we will ensure all the documentation gets to the city council in one package. So we do have everything that we originally had on the warranty deeds and the necessary infrastructure, the deeds explaining the infrastructure. What we don't have is some of the easements that homeowners are aware, that they have already really signed off on through the deeds, but they have a formal easement document now to clarify that out to the city.
Thank you. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. I would just add that I think it's good that we're following our new best practice, but with that, I would move to table this item.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Councilor Johnston to table, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to table passes four zero. Okay, moving to item B, that is the first reading, amendments to the Saco Code, Chapter one twelve, for the general assistance appendices, and that is Councilor Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, main municipal association presents municipalities with new appendices for their city ordinance, which needs to be reviewed and adopted. Be it ordered that the city council hereby approves the first reading of amendments to the Saco Code, Chapter one twelve, General Assistance Program, Appendix AH, adopt the MMA General Assistance Ordinance approved by DHHS, September twenty twenty-five, and further moves to set the public hearing for November tenth, twenty twenty-five. I move to approve the order.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Councilor Edwards, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hewitt. Any discussion or comments on the item? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero. Okay, that completes the action items this evening. Moving on to item ten, that is new business, and item A is the short-term rental discussion. And Administrator Prescott, who do we have with us this evening to present that?
Thank you. So code enforcement director David Toomey and I have been working on this. We can certainly ask for his input on it, but really, this was an item that was requested by Councilor Berman to bring, unfortunately, he's not here with us this evening, but to bring it back up and to share, make sure that we had publicly shared the report that GP COG and PACS had helped us out with about a year ago. This program is expanded under the ordinances we have today. We do have a seasonal rental ordinance, and Dave can speak more to that, but if this program is expanded into more of a short-term rental ordinance, we'll want to look at the staffing need to make sure that that, it can be moderated, and that when we add a program or enhance a program, that we have the right resources to support it. So one thing that I've recommended is that Dave Toomey look at this a little bit more holistically and into the next coming budget cycle, and that he and I work together on red lines to bring back to the council, so you have a full picture of what the costs would be as well to implement an update to the ordinance.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments, input on what you'd like to see coming forward? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. I recognize that it's pretty difficult to capture, you know, a hundred percent of short-term rental data that's out there, but I think that this little study does a pretty good job, or it's a good sampling that, at least from my perspective, you know, indicates that we have a problem. I'm not positive what Council Berman's motivation was, so I can't speak to that. I recognize this area, I guess, tradition, or this, yeah, this area or subject traditionally has, you know, kind of impacted his ward with the short term or the seasonal rentals for the beach area, but I think that what I highlighted in here is that very small map that's there, but more specifically, the percentage that's, shows that we're, you know, roughly, we'll say, thirty-eight percent outside of Ward Four, where we are having these short-term rentals that are currently unlicensed and unregulated throughout the city, and again, for me specifically, about thirty-one and a half percent is in the downtown. So, again, for, well, it's only a few counselors here, but for the past history on this, short-term rentals, or STRs for short, as they're referred to, first came up on my radar in twenty seventeen, I believe it was, where I had a tenant at, or a renter that was in the downtown that had indicated to me that a landlord was actually carving out a portion of their unit to create a short-term rental, again, without permits and whatnot, and this was right down in the core of the downtown. That eventually actually led to her later eviction, so that that landlord could then take that unit and continue to divide it into additional short-term rentals. So that, you know, at the time, I went to city staff and the administrator and said, hey, I think we need to kind of evaluate where we're gonna allow these and how we're gonna regulate them. But again, you know, at that time, it was kind of a relatively new, with the platforms out there like Airbnb and the other ones, so the feeling was, you know, I think at that point, if I remember correctly, there was a. was a lot of lawsuits back and forth between some of those platforms and municipalities. So the idea was, hey, why don't we kind of let other municipalities figure this stuff out first before we try to move forward? You know, that was eight years ago, hard to believe, but, and of course, I've seen the expansion of these types of units proliferate throughout Saco and other communities, but you know, when we speak to, again, from my perspective, the issue here, as we speak to affordable housing, you're taking traditional long-term rentals, 30 days or more, and, and again, I'm well aware of over 20 just in the downtown that I've, you know, had to filter my way, that were traditional 30-day or more rentals that are now a day or a week or whatnot, which, again, that then drives up the price of rentals in the overall market up because there's less of them, because you've taken these, you know, what were long-term rentals and made them short-term. So that's, again, something I think council should really be looking to address. Do we want to allow them in the downtown, or do we want to kind of go with the current ordinance where they're regulated just to the Kenny Shore, Ferry Beach, Camp Ellis area? I had a conversation many years ago now that, based on the ordinance, I would say that all these rentals are illegal. We've just kind of been ignoring them, which is concerning because, again, they're not, not only they're not just licensed and it's great to have that revenue, but beyond that, as I indicated, literally know of someone that had a portion of their unit chopped out just for a single bedroom that became a short-term rental. Did it meet code? I don't know, you know? I doubt it. So are these safe? I understand where, from a landlord's perspective, when you can five times rent for a month by doing it short-term, certainly in peak or in the peak hour or peak seasons versus just renting it out as a monthly rental, I get why they're doing it, but that doesn't make it right. Then, of course, you know, we have other issues that stem from short-term rentals that go unaddressed even in our current short-term or seasonal rental ordinance, which has become an issue even down in those areas like Kenny Shores and Camp Ellis, where there's no restriction on the amount of parking. And I can tell you from traffic safety that I've, you know, that committee that I've sat on for 12 years now, every year, we're dealing with, you know, issues of parking down in there. And of course, now we've pushed the public availability for the rest of us that want to go to the beach, good luck finding a spot because you have all these short-term rentals that are not regulated for parking requirements. They just, they're viewed as a single-family home in many cases, and they meet that standard. And I remember speaking to one elderly woman down there who was in tears, and she couldn't figure out what had happened, and I tried to explain the technology that exists today where renting these out is much easier from the phone, and, you know, she was like, well, what happened to my neighborhood, which I fully understood. It's hard to, you know, address it without something in place. There's excessive partying, there's excessive trash. You know, they might be issued a city waste can, but that's also indicated for a residential, single-family home, maybe a duplex. I think it's up, I think the city issues them up to five units, but when you have 20 people, you know, 20 college kids hang out in one of these locations, they rapidly fill up those trash cans, so then you have excess overflow that's just left everywhere in the neighborhood. So I do think that, you know, it's something that we should, should be looking deeper into at the council level as we move forward into the year. I recognize there's going to be a cost associated with it, but like I said, I'm more concerned about what these STRs are having on the impact of the rest of the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Edwards and Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to look into the percentage of short-term rentals that are corporately owned. I don't know if there's much that we can do about that, but my concern is, is that you could be from anywhere in the country and purchase a home that someone who wanted to live in Maine could live in affordably, and they don't really have any connection to this area. So I would like to start going down that road.
Thank you. I'm sorry, and that was Councilor Hewitt?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mayor McPhail. I just want to be devil's advocate on this one, that some of what I've heard is that landlords sometimes have difficulty if there's tenants who are destroying things or not paying rent, that the state laws have made it very difficult for landlords. So that was one complaint I'd heard. I've also seen the upside of seeing some of the short-term rentals in the downtown with people that I've met in the street that are politely staying at these short-term rentals, looking to use some of our local businesses, that, you know, if they're staying in downtown Saco, they're walking to the local businesses, you know, they're taking the train here. So that is one portion to consider.
Great, thank you. Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I'm trying to look at this one very high level, and I think it encapsulates comments coming from my fellow councilors, both devil's advocate and, I think we have to, at some point, quickly, as a council, determine whether or not short-term rentals is an activity that we want to either encourage or discourage. And when I, when I make a list of the consequences of each, I can, I can see some upsides for both. Economic activity was one that I had highlighted for encouraging, but the counterbalancing consequence for me is the impact that it has on our local housing supply. And recognizing that, you know, supply and demand being what it is, if more housing units are caught up in the short-term rental mode, then it makes the cost of remaining housing high for those who want to have permanent housing. So, and I'm not trying to take a firm position here, but, but I think that these are the consequences that we have to review. I mean, if we encourage short-term rentals, I think personally, and living here my entire life, that the entire culture of our community begins to shift to more of a seasonal, you know, recreational kind of environment. And, and so I have to struggle with that a little bit. I think when I go down, let's discourage this activity, the, the things that come to my mind, and, and they've been spoken to here already, and that is the cost of compliance, the ability to, first of all, identify those who may be violating whatever ordinance we have in place, and if we catch them, you know, what are the, what are the financial ramifications? I think penalties, in my opinion, have to be severe. If you're renting a unit for $1,000 a week as a short-term rental and we fine you $50, who cares? So I think the penalty phase of a discouraging policy needs to be, and, and it's been alluded to here, we're going to have to staff up to, to monitor compliance, and it's a, it's a cost to the city. So if that's a path we want to pursue, then I think we need to pony up and recognize the, the implications to our taxpayers. So I think, in my view anyway, I think the council collectively, at some point, before you get too far into the weeds, need to collectively determine whether or not you want to encourage or discourage, maybe if you're going to discourage, get back to what we had originally thought about in terms of an ordinance down in, near the shoreline, and if not, you know, what does that all mean? So I'm, my guts telling me that I'm really concerned about its impact on housing supply, but I do recognize that there are some other, other considerations here. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Edwards?
Yeah, along those lines, I'm also thinking that the council needs to grapple with whether a homeowner who purchased, you know, whether it's a couple or a person that purchases a home, can fairly expect that things don't change, you know, or that they can maintain their level of community, or if they can control someone who maybe wants to monetize their place. So, I mean, I think we have to get some of those fundamental issues straight and have a vision for the future, because I can, I think we can go back and forth all day, but I think if we don't have a reasonable expectation that if you own a home, or if you're renting in a neighborhood, that you should be able to have some sort of say without prejudice on how things go in your neighborhood.
Thank you. Councilor Johnston?
I would just add that I agree, and I, I view it differently. Single-family home, I rent out a spare room in my house. You know, what I'm challenged with and that I've seen far too often, there's not a lot of housing, let alone affordable housing, particularly in the downtown. So when you take what were long-term rental units, three, four-unit building, and now you've kind of chopped it up into short-term rentals, again, we're not creating enough new long-term to make up for that. So, you know, I guess my position is I'm not really so much concerned about, you know, you or I or a single-family home saying, oh, I got a spare bedroom, I can do that. But there are other, you know, components we have to consider. I mean, some people live in a subdivision. I can point out several, well, I'm actually aware of one in your subdivision that is operated that way. Now, maybe people are okay with that, but I have found that people that have discovered them haven't been. And it's like, well, what do you do? And right now, there's currently nothing in place for, for them to, you know, challenge anything. So, yeah, it's certainly a big topic that we have to, you know, address, but, like I said, kind of been spinning wheels for eight years on it. I'd like to actually move something forward before I'm Councilor Hatch's age and ready to retire.
Councilor Hatch?
And I take no offense to that comment. I agree with you. I think Councilor Johnston's point is, well, we've been trying to fumble and bumble with this thing. I think that we need to move forward, and we need to gather, and I know Deputy City Administrator Prescott is sitting there thinking to herself, because she needs to say it to us, give you some guidance as to what you want to bring back before us so we can wrestle with this issue. And I know that this report, I agree with Councilor Johnston, is a pretty good snapshot, but I think you mentioned that Code Enforcement Officer Toomey's getting, gathering some data on this issue. It might be, it might be interesting to see if you can determine what other municipalities are doing, if anything. And I think if you can bring whatever you can gather together before us, I think we should be able to tell you specifically where we want to move forward. So that's just my, my personal suggestion.
And that is, we're hearing a lot, a lot of the municipalities around us in the area are doing the exact same things. They're all, but one thing also you want to remember with the new state housing initiatives, we are going to, in the future, depending on how many people are going to take advantage of ADUs, the increased lot sizes, in five, 10 years, if they're building an ADU for an aging parent and that parent passes away or goes into a nursing home, that becomes available. So we also need to look at that side going forward, thinking what's going to happen in another five, 10, 15 years with that changeover of the new properties based on the state's housing initiatives. All right, anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item B under new business. It is the proposed updates to the Administrative Code, Chapter 4, Article 5, Departments and Divisions.
If you'll bear with me a moment, I have to get the click share.
So back in the summertime, the former city administrator had tasked me, as well as the department heads, to go through the Chapter 4, specifically Article 5 of Departments and Divisions, and updated to reflect current operating functions of the municipality. And so what we tried to do was take a crack at updating that ordinance to reflect what a regular resident could read and try to navigate, how City Hall works and how the different departments that roll up to city administration and ultimately the city council work. So as a result of that, we had an August 25th new business session after we went out to department heads, got updates on the document, and then we brought it forward to you all. And then September 8th, we had a first reading on that August 25th material where we had some good discussion, and it was tabled just for some further review on several items. So I do appreciate Councilor Hatch bringing forward a memo with several items that we are working through, and Councilor Johnston did submit comments that I've received, but you also did verbally state those comments on the record, so, but they were received. So tonight, I just thought it would be important to bring forward a new business discussion, just an overview of those comments, edits, and the next steps, making sure that I have the relevant information for you to bring back ordinance amendments, updates accordingly. So these were the requested revisions received to date. There was a request to look at departments versus divisions. We put a comment here on the left and follow-up note on the right. In general, divisions are specialized sections that are overseen by the specific departments. We can make that a little bit more clear in the document, I believe. There was a request for legal division location on the org chart, so I'll show you where I've added that as a, as a draft. We can certainly move it. There was a request to do a three-year review period for the legal divisions, so we are in the process of drafting that language to include in an updated red line. There were some stylistic considerations about the org chart within the code, and we can change the style and layout, but we are going to be limited to what our code company can take on for images. We were also asked to make the document gender neutral, so we're editing accordingly. I think we've got everything on that front pretty much finalized. We were asked to have the org chart on the city's website with names and titles. I'll be working with communications on that, but we'll be doing that after we're finished with the red line process and the ordinance process here. We were asked to provide clarification and consistency on appointment provisions for department heads, looking at statutory ordinance and charter provisions, so we're working through that. We're pretty close to being done with that. And then we were asked to move the Economic Development Fund to the Chapter 15 funds, which I agree would be the place where I would look for it. So we are working on drafting that as well. And then we're reviewing other sections of Chapter 4 to properly reference current operations. So that was a good call out. We won't be doing that as part of this update, but we will be bringing that forward shortly thereafter. I also recommend that if we do that, we really need to get comments from other boards and commissions, because in my travels over the years, I have been asked about different sections of their, their specific, you know, planning board, economic development, conservation So with that all being said, I did take a crack at updating the org chart to reflect some of the short-term rentals that are currently under the red line. some of the requests that were made. We will make sure that we put this on the website afterward as well, so you can get it in the council packet, and happy to take any comments on this. Anything, Division is kind of a lighter blue on the screen, and maybe we need to call that out a little bit better. Everything that is more of a navy darker color blue is a department or a function that will have a department rolling up into it.
Okay, great, thank you. Questions or comments? Councilor Hatch?
So just to be clear, our next step would be looking at a red line version, so we can see, have integrated all these changes. I think that's a great, great step. And from a personal standpoint, I'm seeing everything on this chart that I did recommend, so I appreciate that. And it looks like it's all in the right spot, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Hewitt?
Just for a clarification, could we include, like, where the school and the school board, how they link into all of it?
Yes. Oh, can I answer that?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, through the interactive org chart, I think, that we're going to have a webpage for, but we can look at incorporating it here as well.
Thank you.
My two bookends here are looking very sternly.
I think it's going in the right direction, but it's a work in progress, so.
So I guess everything that you have listed and your positions with that now are fine going forward. Are you good? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you. Just anticipation of how soon we will see this again, do you have that on the, some sort of, I won't hold you at any confirmed dates, but what are you thinking?
So we have it on the list to come back, and I'll confirm it with the mayor, but probably early November.
Okay, great.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that completes New Business Items for the evening. Moving on to Item 11, that is the Administrative Update. Administrator Prescott?
Thank you. I have a long update this evening, so I'll try to summarize. Saco invites Ward 3 residents to run an upcoming special election for City Council. Following the resignation of Ward 3 City Councilor Joseph Gunn, who has moved outside Saco city limits, there is a vacancy on the Saco City Council. In accordance with the city charter, a special election will be held on Tuesday, January 13th, to fill this seat for the remainder of the term, which runs through December 6, 2027. Ward 3 generally includes the area along Route 1 Portland Road, north of the I-195 spur, and between Jengits Road and the Old Orchard Beach Town Line. It also includes the neighborhoods immediately adjacent to Ocean Park Road, south of the I-195 spur. Residents interested in serving their community as next Ward 3 City Councilor may now take up nomination papers available, they were beginning October 7th, from the City Clerk's Office. Signature requirement is 35 valid signatures from registered Ward 3 voters, and the return deadline is Friday, November 14th at 1:00 p.m. All nomination papers must be verified by the City Clerk to qualify for the ballot. Special election details will be January 13th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Polling location details will be announced once confirmed, and absentee voting and sample ballot information will also be made available closer to the election date. November 4th election, absentee voting, sample ballots, and more information. The next election is just a few weeks away, separate from the special election, just referenced just earlier. On November 4th, this election will include City Councilor seats, Ward 4 and 5, warden and ward clerk seats, all seven wards. There will be statewide questions, and there are a few different ways that you can cast your ballot. Absentee ballot request at City Hall, swing by the City Hall to request your ballot from the City Clerk on the first floor. Absentee voting began on October 6th. Absentee voters can use the booths in the first-floor conference room to receive and return your ballot all at once during business hours, or take the ballot home, fill it out, and return it through the mail or the drop box on Cuts Avenue. The final day to request an absentee ballot is Thursday, October 30th. The City Clerk's Office will offer extended hours that evening until 6:00 p.m. You can also request absentee ballots by mail and phone. In-person voting on election date. All voters in Saco may cast a ballot at Thornton Academy's Linnell Gymnasium, 438 Main Street, on November 4th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And for more information, please see sacomaine.org/cityclerk, or contact the City Clerk's Office. Main Street Road Safety Demonstration Project is scheduled for removal on October 29th. It does look a little worn out. The temporary road safety demonstration project on Main Street, right near Thornton Academy and Smith Lane, will be removed on October 29th, as the planned demonstration period comes to an end. There's info on why this was installed, as well as the data that we had collected. All questions or feedback can be shared directly by emailing traffic@sacomaine.org. The Saco Fire Department is continuing its mission of connecting with young community members through fun educational activities. This month, students in Saco schools and homeschool families are invited to compete in Saco Fire Department's coloring contest. Parents can pick up a copy of the coloring page at Central Station at 271 North Street. One winner from each school, plus one homeschool winner, will be invited with their family to Central Station for a private tour, and will take home special prizes from the Saco Fire Department. Finished coloring pages must be submitted to Central Station by Friday, October 31st, and winners will be announced in November. There's a new webpage that tracks public works projects around Saco. If you want to know more about the construction work happening in and around town, and when, you can look at this newly launched page to help residents stay informed about ongoing and upcoming work. You can take a look at that at sacomaine.org-publicworksprojects. Just a few spots left for City Historian's Factory Island Tour. You can take a walk with Peter Scontriss, our city historian, who will host another interactive tour of Factory Island on Saturday, October 25th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., starting at the Transportation Center at 138 Main Street. Join us as we trace Saco's journey from indigenous trade hub to red brick mill powerhouse. And just a few spots are left. You can reserve your spot by emailing pescontress@sacomaine.org. The rain date will be October 26th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. There's a new Saco Shoreline Journal, issue four published. I'll let you take a look at that at sacomaine.org/shorelinecommission. Age-Friendly Saco will host our annual Senior Wellness Fair on November 8th. Councilor Edwards gave us a nice update about that, so I'm going to skip that update. And it's Recognizing Code Enforcement Month 2025 in Saco. October is Code Enforcement Appreciation Month, and we'd like to take this moment to honor the contribution of Saco's Code Enforcement Department. They support public health, safety, and quality of life, not only within our city, but across neighboring communities, the state of Maine, and the broader region. We have a remarkable 108 years of combined municipal service in our team, which brings deep expertise and dedication to their work. They are active members of the Maine Building Officials and Inspectors Association, and have held a seat on the Executive Board of the New England Building Officials Education Association for more than 13 years. Please join us in celebrating the Code Enforcement team. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, moving on to Item 12, that is Council Discussion. Any councilors wishing to speak and share? Councilor Hewitt?
I just want to give a few thank yous to, first, the Dyer Library for the spooky scavenger hunt, which is the first time they did it. It was a great success, many people enjoyed it. Also want to thank Thornton Academy for a great homecoming weekend, and the Harvest Festival this weekend. They were all tremendous. Saco is a very exciting place to be right now. Thank you for everybody that put the time in.
Thank you. And yes, we had almost 90 participants at the Dyer Library's first spooky scavenger hunt. So it was a really, really good outkeeping. Keep your eyes open next year for it. Councilor Hatch, did you?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I just want to follow up on part of our public comment from our citizens at the Mobile Home Park, Blue Haven. As we move forward and anticipate at least discussion, discussion surrounding an emergency moratorium, I think it would be helpful, I know we've had a lot of testimony that's in the public record. I know we've received a few emails, and to the credit of all the folks who have submitted the testimony, it's been very, very succinct, somewhat emotional, which is okay, but very, very clear. So I just want to publicly thank them for that. But I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that will be the basis of the drafting of the whereas's for our emergency moratorium. So I think it's important that we try to capture, and I'm sure our city solicitor will assist in that effort, but I just wanted to acknowledge, because we were asked, I think it was Sarah Belandria asked us to give specific information about what we needed, so I think we should try to do that if we can. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I just briefly want to touch upon another thing that's been on my radar for a while. I attended my son's junior Trojan football game this past weekend at Thornton Academy, which was great and all, they lost, but the event was fun. But while I was standing there in the stands, it kind of cropped up, as things often do with me, because I'm watching the traffic out on Main Street. Of course, that demonstration project's still out there, which has, you know, slowed the traffic down, but it was very clear when we have, you know, activities, our normal activities, summer months, but then when we have events, like games at Thornton Academy, the Pumpkin Fest, I know TA was generously allowing us to use the parking lot for the Pumpkin Fest, but then you have the Pumpkin Fest downtown, and just overall, you could see the congestion, which, again, made me think of the back access road that I have been advocating for, for some years. And I just wanted to bring it back up, because, again, for those councilors that weren't present, and, you know, the public at the time, back in 2021, when we were working with the owners of the building that, where Chipotle now sits, the former Pizza Hut building, I had advocated for easement, which ultimately actually ended up being the deeded rights to the land near the back portion of that lot, because there has been a plan dating back to about 2025, rather, that explored the possibility of a back access road, so we could get some of this traffic off the main throughway there and to the rear of these properties. So, again, that was a major component for my approval of that contract zone. And then, in the following year's budget, I had put forth a budget amendment to have feasibility study done, which the city's done, and it has been presented to traffic safety. I will say, it certainly was a controversial plan, but, and again, I don't know where it's at internally, but from the council standpoint, I'd like to, you know, see that come back up to, you know, be presented to council, so that we can further discuss that. Again, I have input I'd like to add. And, you know, I haven't lost sight of the fact that we have the master plan out there, transportation plan, but from all the meetings I've been involved with that, this particular component actually didn't surface up on that plan. I also look at it as, you know, a council initiative that predates the implementation or the kickoff for that plan. So just wanted to put it out there. You know, I recognize we got a lot going on, but in the coming year, it'd be helpful if we could have Director Moore present that to council. Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. All right, that's moving on to Item 13, and that is an adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Edwards. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hewitt. We'll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0 to adjourn at 8:13. And thank you very much, everyone, and have a great week.